Good evening. I'd like to call the order to the Committee of the Whole Meeting for the Village of Westmont for January 31st, 2013. Madam Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Nero.
Here.
The Clerk's here. Trustee Emory is absent tonight. Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Clubenow.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Trustee Zinnick is absent tonight. Manager Cyril. Manager Cyril.
Oh, here, sorry.
Attorney Semenak.
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Public Works Director May.
Here.
Deputy Fire Chief Connolly.
Here.
Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Acting Community Development Director Malik.
Here.
Village Planner Ziegler.
Here.
All right. Everybody join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, just to get things started, for mayor reports, I'd just like to wish our trustee Scott a happy birthday today. Today's his birthday, so happy birthday. And the next thing I'd like to do is welcome, one second. Oh, I'm sorry. We have open forum. We do have one person tonight. Grace Snyder.
My name is Grace Snyder Kubica. I'm a citizen, resident, property owner and landlord. And I'm back again because a meeting or so ago, I asked, or I suggested that it would be courteous to the landlords if a letter was written nullifying that application that we fill out each year for the privilege of renting our apartments. And I was told that there had been an announcement made, but not everybody's had that announcement. I would like now formally to request that the board direct whomever should be writing this letter to write such letter to the landlords. And you obviously can, if you can send out the applications, you have all their names and addresses. But I'm doing my taxes. I'm closing my year out, as are all of you. I have an invoice that's open. I'd like to see something to go with it, to staple to it. And I'm really not trying to be a pest, but I'm not going to stop being a pest. I really expect this board to follow a simple request. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That is it for open forum. So moving right on, I'd like to welcome up Larry Forsberg from the Westmont Chamber to help present the Holiday Decorating Awards.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I have with me Mr. L Carson, who's the Vice President of the Westmont Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau. And our President, Mr. Greg Billson, to his regrets, he's out of town and couldn't join us this evening, otherwise he'd be here with us. We're here to report on the outcome of the Holidays Decorating Contest. We had 23 businesses participate this year, and we came up, we had our home-based business group judge, and we want to say thank you to the Park District for loading us their bus that evening, so we can drive around Westmont and do our judging. And they came up with three honorable mentions and then a first, second and third place. So without any further ado, we will start with our honorable mentions. The first one is a novel experience, and Jan Comey said earlier and sent her regrets that she couldn't be here. She had a winter wonderland theme, which was just absolutely gorgeous and was just well received by the community. We also have Uncle Bub's Barbecue, and Mark told me he thought he'd be here, but I don't see him here, so I will pass by that. And they did a really nice job, and I'm not sure if anybody noticed a decorated pig that was above the door, but there was quite a conversation piece. Moving along, we have Westmont Floral. Teresa and her team did a magnificent job decorating their store as they always do. It's not only the quantity of the decorations that they provide, but the quality, just really magnificent. And you drive by there in the evening as dust becomes, and it just really jumps out at you, what they do. And unfortunately, Teresa couldn't be here because they're at a birthday celebration, someone else is having a birthday today. Moving along, we have La La Lee, and I'll give this to Mr. Carson, and I'll ask La La Lee, Laura, to come up. And Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind coming around and getting a quick photo out. Why don't you go up to the front there? And Laura, if you can tell us a little bit about your decorations.
Our theme was the Sweet Forest, so everything was done with candies and cookies and cakes on the trees, and then Frosty could go visit his polar bear friends and penguins into the next room. So it was like the forest theme.
It was beautiful. Thank you.
Thanks.
Can we get a quick photo?
Hold on, Laura. Hold on one moment, please. And Laura, if you don't mind, have a second, because we're going to get one group shot
at the very end, okay? Next, we have Uncle John's Music. We do have a representative here for Uncle John's Music. Why don't you share a little bit of insight about all your hard work?
Well, I'm Heather Castle, Uncle John's wife, and we had a little, Silver Bells was our theme, and we had a lot of silver instruments displayed in our case, and we both wanted to have the windows where it was something very interesting for everybody to look at. So everywhere you looked, you would see something very new and interesting and glittery and fun.
Heather, could I ask you one quick question? How many hours did you spend painting?
Oh, lots. Yeah, the instruments took a long time, probably a couple days to get them all covered.
It was excellent. Thank you. And next, we have with us our first place winner, and that's Cuts on Cass.
My name's Danny from Cuts on Cass. I'm Crystal's boyfriend. Our theme was Charlie Brown Christmas, if you guys saw it. Basically went back to the basics and got the crafts and art skills out and cut them out of plywood. We got the whole gang out there and then had Snoopy wrapped up in the lights, you know, just like the movie. And we got the idea from just Charlie Brown coming on TV. Decided to replicate it, so it came out really good.
Any comments, girls? We'll do a quick picture. If we can get one group picture before you leave, if you don't mind. Okay, everybody tighten up here a little bit. Tighten up here. Here we go. One, two, and three. Thank you very much, and congratulations for doing such a great job. Thank you. Please don't go away. We have one other special recognition tonight. On behalf of the Westmont Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau, we'd like to present a certificate of appreciation to the Village of Westmont for the investment made in the Downtown Westmont Business District Holidays Decorations. The members of the Westmont Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau greatly appreciate the time, the effort, materials and investment made in decorating downtown this year. 2012, downtown looked great, and we know there's lots of challenges with budgets and priorities and so forth, but it really, really was warmly received. And I know from the chamber, we received an awful lot of feedback from the community at large, and so we want to say thank you to the board for doing that. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, thanks to everybody that participated, and thanks for the chamber for that nice certificate of appreciation. I know while we all up here really think Christmas lights are important and decorating the downtown is real important, and so it's nice to know that everybody else feels that same way, too. Let's see. Next, on Monday, we'll have the Wildcat Cheerleader Squads here for some awards, as well as the Wildcat Football Black Line National Awards, too, on Monday. But that's all I have for mayor spot. Madam Clerk?
I just want to, well, we have a correction in my minutes. You abstained on the bank vote, and I didn't mark that. I did mark it, but I didn't carry it over correctly. And then I have to do, we have to do some lineups on the items at the Committee of the Whole to get names moved over, so we have a couple of little things there. And did you leave anything that night? I'll look in my notes. You didn't say anything?
I don't think so.
I'll look in my notes, just to make sure.
It's not that I remember.
And a happy birthday to trustee Scott.
Thank you.
And the last thing, I just want to remind, I did this the other night, the water bills are coming out, and they will be slightly higher, and that is a pass-through cost from the Water, DuPage County Water Commission and the City of Chicago. It is not the Village of Westmont. We're just passing through what we are having to pay for to the customers, so, for the residents. And that's all I have tonight. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Our village attorney, trustee Scott, happy birthday.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask for an executive session tonight on personnel, also on pending litigation, and also appointment to fill a vacancy in public office. And then I had wanted to present to you some revised language for the open forum portion of the agenda, just tweaking that a little bit. I had emailed it to Patty and told her I'd pass it out tonight and did not bring it, so maybe we'll hold off till the next, on Monday I'll pass it out, and we can at least look at it then, and if you guys agree, we can implement that change at the next set of meetings. That's all I have. All right. Our village manager?
Thank you. Happy birthday, trustee Scott. I wanted to mention that the finance ordinance this evening is $770,066.92, and that is all I have.
All right. Trustee items. Trustee Fleming.
Okay, I won't say it. I'll just say, ooh.
Ditto.
That's all I got.
All right. Trustee Clubenow?
I just wanted to wish you all a happy birthday.
Great. And trustee Scott?
With the cold weather, thank you to everyone anyhow, but with the cold weather, just let's remember about the neighbors, the elderly, maybe living near us, to keep an eye on them, so that they're okay. Another minute, that's it. Thank you.
Enough? All right. Moving right along. On Monday, we will have a public hearing for the Southwestmont Business Development TIF District. Anything to be removed from the consent agenda?
Can I go back to that item?
Yes.
Number two under that item says, "Consider an ordinance accepting the joint review board recommendation and creating the Southwestmont Business District, TIF District." On Monday, this board will not be passing or considering an ordinance to create the TIF District. It's actually just a single ordinance, if you choose to approve it, accepting the recommendation to create a TIF District. We actually have to wait, I think it's 14 days, before we can pass an ordinance actually creating the TIF District once the public hearing's concluded. So Monday would just be the public hearing and accepting that recommendation.
All right. Anything else?
No.
All right. Moving on, number seven, any items to be removed from the consent agenda? All right, here and none. Move right on to unfinished business. Nine, a Central Business District Tax Increment Financing District Proposal. Board to consider the following. Number one, an ordinance to fix the date, time and place for the public hearing pertaining to the Central Business District Tax Increment Financing District. After hearing a presentation from Tesco and Associates on the draft plan and eligibility study for the proposed CBD TIF, and... Number two, a motion to accept the draft development plan and eligibility study prepared and presented by Tesco Associates, and request staff to continue the TIF process for the CBD, including but not limited to accepting names and contact information of interested parties registering for notifications regarding the CBD TIF, organizing a joint review board and completing revisions and/or work on the redevelopment plan and project.
Good evening. On September 27th, the village board heard the preliminary report from Tesco Associates for the Central Business District TIF analysis and study. This evening, we have Con Savoye here, present to explain the findings of the eligibility study, as well as the plan and program that have been completed since that September meeting. So just as kind of a brief summary, the consultant found that of the criteria, it appears that the village Central Business District would meet seven of 13 criteria for establishing a TIF District, where only five would be, a minimum of five are required by law. So with that, there are some exhibits that Mr. Savoye has brought this evening, and I will turn it over to him to walk you through the redevelopment plan and program, and then go back to the eligibility study to answer any questions there may be.
Thanks.
Good evening again. Good to be with you. Tonight is the subject of the possibility of establishing a TIF District for the downtown area, and I say that because there's two concurrent TIF Districts, as you know, that the village is considering, and I often even get confused over which one I'm talking about. So the one point of clarification to what Shannon said with regard to the eligibility study, which was previously presented to you, I think it was back in September, is that different than the TIF District being proposed for the Southwestmont Business Area down at 63rd and Cass, this area qualifies differently. And the area for the downtown is qualified under what's called a conservation area. In a conservation area, the basic requirements of a conservation area are, one, that first you have to have an area that has 50% or more of its structures being 35 years old or older, and you can imagine in downtown area that is true. Once you meet that criteria, the statute says, different than the other one we're considering, that you only have to meet three of the 13 criteria versus the Southwestmont area, where we're looking at having to prove five of the 13 criteria. So in fact, this is even, I don't know if you can, how you can say it, more eligible, but there's, it's, there's less criteria that we have to find to meet the definitions of the statute under eligibility. Other than that, I'm not going to get into eligibility. Again, that was presented before, and again, the purpose of this, I think it's important that everyone understand that this is not a public hearing. There will be a public hearing coming up, assuming the board decides to go through and establish the ordinance in early May. This is simply an opportunity for us to present informally the information that will likely be, then be subject to a public hearing. There's going to be a community meeting that's going to be coming up relatively soon, where all of the residents within the TIF District, and I think within 750 feet, if I remember, actually are going to or have already received notice about that. There will be a formal public hearing. There'll be a separate joint review board, which is the composition of all the eligible, under TIF statute, eligible taxing districts. So they'll be involved in reviewing this in much more detail. So tonight is just simply an opportunity for us to give a little bit of an overview of what's going to transpire, just to make sure that there's no surprises, nothing that you see in the report, or anything that you feel would be inappropriate, or something you'd want to change. So having said that, and let me again preface this study that's before you by saying a couple things. One, the community is, as you well know, has been considering the revitalization of downtown for at least 14 to 15 years, and probably going back even farther than that. And I say that because the community back in 2000 established downtown plan. In that plan, it's interesting what it says in that plan, but there are several things that I thought were important. One, it said that the downtown should and could support an additional thousand dwelling units, and it needed to do that to be sustainable, to support the businesses and whatever, that there was a desired goal of about 150,000 square feet of retail, that the consultant at that time, the community, supported, I believe, at least the notion that there needed to be higher density, higher height buildings than currently allowed, to allow for the density that was being recommended in that plan. And I believe that plan also supported the idea of TIF. This is a 15-year-old idea. So this, the fact that the community is now moving forward, trying to advance these plans is not a new idea. And I want to also say that the current effort that you have recently undertaken to prepare a comprehensive plan, which is going to be adopted, as I understand it, very soon, also supports many of the same objectives that were echoed back in 2000, but clearly have not yet transpired, or at least transpired to the extent that everyone hoped they would. Certainly, there has been some development. In fact, you would argue that the village of anyone has been quite aggressive and has spent considerable effort and dollars in trying to do the very thing that we hope the private market to do, in terms of kickstarting and investing in your downtown. You have done infrastructure improvements, sidewalks improvements. You have a new investment in a Metro station. You have this facility, new village park. There've been streetscape improvements. The point is, a lot of community investment in this area, and we still have an area, as many have recognized, in your comprehensive plan, there were several community surveys done, business surveys done, and the same comments kept coming back in the recent comprehensive plan. And it was interesting, one statistic that said in the survey, I think this was the community survey, 64% of the people ranked, and I think this was the highest percentage of the potential issues that they ranked, ranked revitalization of downtown to be one of the highest priorities and got the most responses. So the community at large understands, sees the need to do this, and the TIF actually is just now the implementing tool, the financing tool, to hopefully help move this down, farther down the road. Other than that, I think it's also important to indicate, as I mentioned before, that your current comprehensive plan does reinforce what was stated back in 2000 relative to the need for higher density, more residential, more commercial. In fact, there was a specific market study done in this current comprehensive plan that talks about specific targeted types of uses that that consultant believed could be possible, meaning new uses that could be introduced into the downtown area. And then again, one of the number-one economic goals established in the comprehensive plan, it supports and says that TIF should be used for downtown, and also echoes the same thing for the Southwestmont Business District. So there has been a lot of work done. This is a new idea. This seems to have very broad community support for going forward. The redevelopment plan also has another feature that is not part of the earlier plan we did for the Southwestmont Business District, and that is a housing study. And this was required by statute when you had a district that had 75 or more inhabited units within the district. And as the redevelopment plan, and the audience unfortunately can't see it very well, but I'll point it up briefly here. This is a redevelopment plan, and the description of the redevelopment and the color coding of the plan describes the type of uses that are being recommended. Most of these are very consistent with your downtown comprehensive plan, downtown element within the comprehensive plan, and this actually takes it a bit farther, gives more refined detail to how we at least envision the downtown to be developed over time. This plan, there is numbers circled here, it simply indicates that there's a potential for up to 29 different redevelopment opportunities in this larger, what we call the downtown or central business district area, and I'll talk about that in a little bit, but I just wanted you to at least see what this was about. The purpose, and I'm going to go back, the purpose of the housing study essentially is to say that if, through redevelopment over time, if there is displacement of residents, will there be, is there, available comparable housing within the area to, for people to move into? And we have found and documented from various sources that in fact, within the market area, within, looking at the communities even adjacent, and you could go even farther beyond that, that there is comparable for sale, both owner-occupied and rental units, in the price ranges for which we looked at, that could be the potential properties that could be redeveloped and people would have to find new housing for those units, I mean, for those redevelopment areas. The plan itself establishes several things. I mentioned the eligibility already, which it also references. The plan in the area that's described covers 144 acres. The project area contains 445 structures on 410 parcels. The plan, as I had laid out before you earlier, describes a number of different types of land uses, including mixed use, and mixed use, we are talking about similar to, I think it's the station, Richmond Station development, where you have retail on the first floor, residential and/or office above. To see more of that, multifamily use, multi-floor, multifamily, commercial, one or two-story, and then office, one or two-story, and/or a mix of those types of uses. As I mentioned before, a number of development sites identified and described, allowing for different densities and different heights. What's also a part of this plan, I think was echoed in some earlier parking studies, but we did check with Metro because knowing Metro and all the work we do in downtowns and TOD areas, they always want more parking. And the residents actually had expressed the need for parking as well, and I think there was even discussion in the comp plan of the potential of a parking structure. Metro is looking at the potential, long-term, I mean, way long-term, but they would like to, at least the community, to think about more parking, even for commuters. And we have now accommodated that within this plan and looked at a potential parking structure, long-term. The plan also, and the TIF Act requires that we describe several things in the plan. It asks us to identify redevelopment project costs, and we have done so at least to the, at least to the extent we can at this time. There's clearly going to be some things that are going to be coming up through the process that we can't necessarily all anticipate, but on page 18 of the report, it does itemize what those redevelopment project costs could be in terms of property, assembly, land acquisition, demolition, site improvements, utilities, rehabilitation, additional parking, and so forth and so on, developer financing costs, and even potential environmental remediation, if that was required, up to a tune of almost, in round numbers, around $80 million of potential costs. And these, those are the ones that we could identify at this time. The statute also asks us to identify what the potential source of the funds would be. In this case, it's going to be property taxes that would be accruing as a result of the new development into the TIF fund, if it is established. And the report estimates that the incremental increase in property taxes over the term of the TIF in $2012, current dollars, will be roughly about $240 million. Now, we recognize, and if you've looked at this plan and you at least have a sense of it, it would be wonderful if we could imagine all 29 areas being redeveloped. I don't think it's likely going to happen, but the problem is, we have to be as general and as broad as possible within the plan, because we don't know when and what blocks and what parcels will be developed, and so we have to be, you know, as broad as possible in terms of the scope of what we potentially look at. But just ask yourself this, if even half of that, and I think that's a realistic expectation, were in fact developed in 23 years, you would have, what, $120 million of new investment, way exceeding what we anticipate at this time to be the potential costs associated with revitalizing this area. So bottom line, the revenue should far exceed the costs. The statute also requires us to identify what the current assessed value is of the properties within this district, and what... properties within this district and what the future value will be based on a build-out of the projects that we've identified over time. And the current EAV of the project is roughly around $40 million in this area upon completion of all the redevelopment projects. And again, the caveat is, we recognize that probably all of them won't be developed, but if they were, we're going to have a new EAV of 300 and over $340 million worth of investment that's roughly 780% increase. It's an amazing increase. So again, ask yourself the same question. If we were to achieve in half of that, it would far outstrip, outweigh any natural increase in EAV or development that some might argue would likely occur on its own because we don't think it will. And of course, you can see the vacancies and other things that are currently happening in downtown. So it's, this district has the potential to have significant economic benefit to the community, generate significant new tax revenue, and you know Westmont, you're a built-out community. There's not too many places you can go for new investment. It has to be stretch what you have, go higher, whatever. And that's really what this is about. All the previous plans recognize the same thing. It's an obvious, it's an obvious issue and one that all communities like yours deal with. So that's the bottom line with regard to the plan. I think I've summarized already well what the previous plan recommendations have been, and just want to underscore the fact that, you know, there's been 15 years of a plan in place that have recommended very similar kinds of things and very little development has occurred in 15 years. So you've got to ask yourself the question, you know, but for the use of TIF, and the statute asks that question, will development occur? I think the last 15 years, in the biggest boom economic times we could have imagined, which most people believe will probably never happen, and at least in our lifetime, you're not likely going to achieve the development you would hope for without this tool in place. And there's other findings. So probably bored you a little bit, but at least get that information out if anyone had any questions.
I'd just like to add one thing before maybe questions begin. For the benefit of the public, back in October, the Village Board created the Interested Parties Registry. So anyone who is interested in following the proceedings as they relate to the downtown Central Business District TIF can sign up to be aware through mailings and email with future meeting dates, et cetera. So in order to do that, you can go to the Village website. It's westmont-il.gov or come into Village Hall. And in the Community Development Department, you can pick up the forms to register.
Great, thanks. Any questions on the board? Comments?
I guess I've got a question.
Go ahead.
No, no. Could you explain for the public whether every single property has to meet the qualification factors for Conservation District? Because we do have some properties that have been renovated over the recent years.
Correct. The answer is no, they do not. The statute requires that there has to be a reasonable distribution and presence. They don't, the statute doesn't establish a specific percentage, as is in the case of age, but the statute does say that a district has to have a reasonable distribution, and these factors have to be generally present. In fact... I have a map that describes, this was done earlier as a part of the redevelopment report, and this color code insists that we have identified that pretty much all properties within the downtown area, it appears at least, it looks at least three of the 13 criteria in the study. But bottom line, you're absolutely correct. There are certain properties that have been developed more recently that would not qualify if you just were to look at those separately, but because they're part of a larger district, the statute allows us to include those properties. The point of that is, is that by inclusion of those properties, we can make certain improvements to the streets, to the sidewalks, to the properties themselves, if that's necessary, through the use of TIF funds. So, good question. It's quite clear, and there are many wonderful structures and new developments, including, of course, this building is really not an issue, it does generate taxes, but that certainly would not necessarily be needing TIF assistance. But there are other things that TIF can do to help not only benefit those properties, but other properties adjacent to them through the utilities and stormwater and other types of improvements that are being recommended.
Then I guess, and you partially answered my next question, which is, if a property owner has recently developed or redeveloped their property within this district, you know, and they look at this, you know, why am I included? I think you just answered that. And are there benefits to that property by being included in the TIF district?
Yeah, absolutely. All the properties, even if it's not even one of a key redevelopment site, could stand a potential benefit. So, you know, one of the misunderstandings is, you know, TIF is only used for developers and to, for new projects. That's absolutely not true. Most communities that I know of use TIF funds to assist existing businesses with existing business expansions, with facade improvements, with improvements to the building to bring it up to code. I know a lot of buildings are below code. If that were an issue, so it could be a number of things that TIF could be used to improve existing businesses. In fact, we always certainly encourage and recommend that that be done.
Con, are there any unique issues here that you see that are, let's say, different than other communities that you've done downtown TIF districts? Any one big issue that's standing out? Are we pretty much following just what everybody has issues with?
Yeah, I think the things that are classic to any downtown, I think, are present here. I think a lot of communities struggle with the issue of parking and having enough parking to serve its businesses and commuters and so forth. The issue of vacancies and filling storefronts is a common problem in a lot of even the, you know, the upper-end communities, if you will, that you would think would not be an issue. The need for enhancements to beautification, to facade improvements, to existing businesses is a common approach. And the notion, the bottom-line notion, is that many of the projects you see in the downtowns all around, I think it's Downers Grove, has a TIF district in place, you know, I don't know if Clarendon Hills actually does. Do they?
Yes.
Yeah, they did. So anyway, I think the point is, if you look at a number of the downtowns, in fact, we did a little study, a little map for the community, and it was like, you know, Westmont was in the hole in the donut because pretty much everyone around you already had TIF districts in place when it was already doing this. And I think a lot of the development that's occurred has been a result of that. So, in many cases, I think this is for Westmont, a little bit of a catch-up, to be competitive. And that really probably should be one of the key messages. But, you know, you're in a competitive economic environment, you're competing with adjacent communities for tax revenue, for new development. They have the tools and you don't. And unfortunately, I think you're seeing the results of that, that there's really not been the activity that you have seen in some of the adjacent communities.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Thanks, Con, for coming.
Moving on to new business. 10A, 104 South Cass Avenue, Westmont Watch and Jewelry Repair. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following request from Pawan Rajput of Ponamar Watch and Delivery, I'm sorry, and Jewelry Repair Incorporated, to operate a watch repair, jewelry repair, watch and jewelry sales business in the B1 Limited Business District on development permit to waive cash in lieu of B1 parking spaces.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies.
How are you doing?
My name is Pawan Rajput. I'm representing for Watch and Jewelry Repair. I already have a business in Yacht on Watch and Jewelry Repair from last five years. I have it in Westmont right now on 6006 Cass Avenue, but I'm planning to move right on next door on 104 South Cass Avenue. And I'm going to do fixed watches, and we also going to do, carry new merchandise, like watches and also jewelry.
Questions or comments from the board?
Can you tell me the watch manufacturers you're going to be carrying and/or repairing?
I'm going to carry all the watches. Most of them, it's like a Seacoast or a Bulova, most of a brand name for stuff. And I repair all kind of watches. I have a 19-years experience. My previous job from JCPenney, I worked for them 13 and a half years. So now I have my own from last 2008 September. And I'm currently running that one up till now. I'm still going on for that one, too. So this is my second option to open up here in Westmont, because I do see there's no service for watches and jewelries in this area.
So you can pretty much handle any watch that comes in?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thanks. Any else?
You talked about not just repair, but you're going to sell watches and jewelry.
Yes, I do. And I also will have an ad in the paper. That's what I'm running right now for Westmont Watch and Jewelry Repair currently, because that's what I own on 6006 Cass Avenue. And this is what I'm running for, Yacht on Watch and Jewelry Repair. It's half a page ad comes from Lombardian. So I'm pretty...
You're going to bring your sign over then that you have now? You're going to use the same sign, or?
Yes, I do. I'm going to bring the same sign over. And I do have the picture for the sign.
Staff would recommend not reusing the box sign because it doesn't really meet the character of the downtown. We talked with the applicant about potentially using it in the window.
I'm assuming that, is this available for a facade grant also in front of this building? Or has that building already been, the owner of that building, has it already been done? Or can the, at least her request it?
Shannon, maybe Jill, do you know?
I'm not sure, but that's something we can check. And then if there is money available, then we could talk to the applicant about getting that for a new, potentially for a new sign.
Right. So we'll be in touch with you to let you know about that, if that is available.
All right, thank you.
Good enough.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah, sure.
Will you be buying jewelry, gold?
No.
Okay.
So I guess my question is, it seems like this is a business, from your comments, that fits the character of downtown, but there may be a concern about the reuse of the box sign. And you bring up a concern, the resale, like the Cash for Gold-type businesses aren't allowed in downtown. That's not a permitted use. So jewelry watch sales, absolutely. Jewelry watch repairs, absolutely allowed. The resale shops are, the Cash for Gold pawn shops are not.
You have to be licensed for that. I'm not carrying a license. I'm not planning to carry it either.
So would you like, seems like the pawn shop isn't an issue because it's not allowed in the first place, but would you like any limitations on the sign in the development permit?
Well, I would have to concur with what our own in-house are saying. I mean, I think, you know, the box sign, maybe where it is right now is okay, but it doesn't really fit, I think, what we are looking for in the downtown district. That's why I suggested the facade grant program, for them to take a look at that and some possible, you know, either awning or signage or whatever, to replace that, maybe as a temporary situation, have that in the inside of your window, maybe. But once you get the outside of that done, then remove that from the, remove that from the window.
Sure.
Just as something to, you know...
Right. Because there are design criteria for downtown, including suggested signage, whether it's an awning or some sort of appropriate signing that fits the character a little better. So with your permission, I'll add that to the ordinance.
And I also confirmed with Shannon that there is facade money available for that building.
Great. All right. Anything else? Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming.
You're welcome.
All right.
Moving on, B, 400 Plaza Drive, Julian Electric Site and Landscaping Plan Request. Board to consider an ordinance approving a request from Anthony Julian of Julian Electric to approve a site and landscaping plan for a building and parking lot addition in the
Hello, thank you. My name is Anthony Julian. I'm from Julian Electric. We're over at 701 Black Hawk, 406 Plaza, and 400 Plaza Drive. We've been at 701 since 1978, 406 since '92, and 400 since 2009. Our plan now, we're asking for approval on, is to expand our 400 Plaza building. We're going to add 15,000 feet and 60 parking spots to that location. And if you, this is the, our plan is here, the expansion in the back. I don't know if some of you have been over there before. Some of you are there for our grand opening three years ago. Basically, expansion here, straight back, and then the additional parking that's open land right now, we're going to be putting in parking.
Very nice, you're high-tech here.
If there's any questions, I have my experienced staff with us, general contractor, engineer, and architect as well, they can answer some technical questions if you have any.
This is going to give you about how many more parking spots?
It'll be 60 additional.
Additional, okay. And did I see on one of the pictures that you do have definitely a parking problem with cars stacked up behind each other or something?
Existing?
Yeah.
Right now, we do have a parking problem, yes.
Yeah.
Which is a good problem. We have a lot of employees that we've hired over the last few years, so with the expansion, we're going to add plenty of parking to be able to handle that.
And you think, and that should cover it, the 60 will be?
Yes, it'll more than cover.
Fantastic.
For existing, and it'll be left over for any future employment expansion as well, as far as people driving in cars to our plant.
Do we need to worry about any flooding issues in there because of more black?
That's actually one of the biggest issues that came up at the Plan Commission meeting. As you may have noticed, there's a several-month gap in between Plan Commission and Committee of the whole. And between that time, their engineer and staff's engineer have been working together and trying to resolve the situation, and they feel, both of the engineers feel very comfortable that they've addressed the detention concerns.
Okay, so it's been worked on since the planning?
Mm-hmm. Definitely. There were also some neighbor concerns about screening, and since then, they made a good-faith effort and added some evergreen screening facing the neighbors.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
No.
All right. We'll vote it out on Monday. Thanks for coming in.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Keep hiring.
Yeah.
We appreciate it.
All right, moving on. C, Westmont. Oh, okay. Some members of the public here, is there any public comment for the Julian Electric rebuild? All right, C and N, move right on.
Westmont Chamber of Commerce Tourism and Bureau Open House. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following request for the 2013 semi-annual Westmont Chamber of Commerce open house scheduled for Friday, sorry, February 20th
Good evening. This is an annual request, the Chamber of Commerce, and has a open house two times a year. They serve alcohol on it. There's a Village Ordinance prevents the sale or disbursement of alcohol on Village properties. We're asking the board to waive that requirement and approve this, and also, Chamber of Commerce has asked to have the fee waived. This has been an annual event, I want to say, for at least the last three years that I'm aware of. And there have been no incidents at the events.
Any comments?
They got both dates down for the year, so they don't have to come back. That's a good idea.
That's right. It's always fun, too.
Very good.
Anything else? It'll be on for vote on Monday. Thanks.
D, Westmont Center. Board to consider an ordinance approving a lease for the current term for State Representative Patty Belloc.
Manager?
Oh, we're on that. So they're a current tenant. They pay common area maintenance, as all other tenants do, which is utilities, gas, electric, things like that, based on their use. They're just seeking to renew this for, I think, the...
Her term?
Yeah, based on her new term.
Same lease rate and everything is sold?
Yes.
Is there any problem, should the building be sold? That's, we just give notice, like they would give notice to us? Same procedures?
Correct.
Anything else? All right, moving right on.
E, Lamont Police Department Outdoor Range Agreement. Board to consider an ordinance approving an agreement allowing the Westmont Police Department to use the Lamont Police Department's outdoor range.
This is an agreement that we have entered into annually with the Lamont Police Department. It allows us to use their outdoor range, which is also used by other police departments in the area. This is... This is an agreement that we've entered into annually with the Lamont Police Department. It allows us to use their outdoor range, which is also used by other police departments in the area. This is utilized when the weather starts to warm up, usually from March until we go through November. It allows us to practice our tactics a little bit more, as well as be able to utilize and qualify with our weapons that we may not be able to use on our indoor range, such as our long guns, AR-15s. Shotguns are okay, but the ARs, we are not. It also allows us, our officers' tactics, to be able to practice getting in and out of cars, more scenarios, and more tactical advantage by practicing outdoors rather than indoors. And again, this is something we've been doing for several years, and it is also a budgeted item.
Alright, thank you. Any comments, questions? Alright, moving right on. F, Redspeed Illinois LLC Agreement. Board to consider an ordinance to enter into a renewal agreement between Redspeed Illinois LLC and the Village of Westmont for the red light photo enforcement services at the intersection of Cass Avenue and Naperville Road.
I have a brief PowerPoint presentation, which will be an overview of our Redspeed program since its inception. For those in the public, our car agreement is a four, has been a four-year agreement, which is due to expire coming up on March of, 2nd of this year. And Redspeed has approached us, asking us if we're interested in renewing our program. And what I'd like to do is just go through the PowerPoint real quick and answer any questions order public may have. Followers to Texas are basing activity based on the intersection Naperville and Cass Avenue, starting March 2nd, 2009, and ending December 31st, 2012. We only have two approaches at that intersection, which is the southbound lanes of Cass Avenue and the westbound lanes of Naperville Road. We were going to try to expand the program at the inception, however, some mandates and some guidelines from the state, we weren't able to meet. We tried to put lights up at, or enforcement lights up at Route 83 and Ogden, and the state has denied us, and also Cass and Ogden, we ran into some property and logistical issues. Officers have viewed a total of 21,642 suspected violations, those are the violations that are sent to us by Redspeed Illinois. 5,064 or 23.42 percent were approved by our officers, and 16,573 or 78, I'm sorry, 76.58 percent were rejected or turned down by the officers, is not meeting our criteria or meeting our judgment standard for a violation. That standard is basically, the officers who review these videos, view that as if they were to view the violation in person, would they issue a citation, and that's the standard that they use. You will see that we reject more, obviously, than we have approved more, and that's because of that standard. From March 2nd, 2009, which was when the program began, through December 31st, 2012, the village has received $141,890 in fines. Approximate costs associated with the administration of the program, that is the time for Sergeant Gruner, the administrator, to oversee the program, as well as our officers to view the violations, was $32,962. That also includes, I believe, our adjudicator costs. After costs, the village has realized $114,631 over the four-year program, four-year life of the program. For those, the outstanding fines, we are currently due $16,860 for any late or unpaid fines. There's a breakdown for you by years, for the four years that we've had the program. You'll see that in 2009, officers viewed 5,050 violations. And in 2012, each, each year there, but we viewed more this year than we have in any year in the past. You'll also see, too, that the percentage of violations approved, approved, has pretty much remained, if not constant, very close to each other since the 2010 and on up. Since 29 was the first year, so that was a little bit higher. It could be expected there's more violations in the first year of the program. But since 2010, 2011 and 2012, we're at 21 or 20 percent. You'll see that the village's cost is listed there, and as well as the realized cost of the revenue. An outstanding is not a cumulative total, that's a total for every year. It's, at the, at the, at the end of the year, at that month, that figure, such as the 16,860, would include those, those fines that have remained unpaid and gone to collections. It also would include violations from December that someone has not paid, and also violations from January. That figure is a moving or a rotating number, it's not a cumulative number. Accident data, as you can see, we started out in 2008 with four accidents at that intersection. 2009, four, 2010, we dropped down to two. Then for 2011 and 2012, there were three. There's been no indication that the red light cameras were a contributing factor to any of the accidents at that intersection on those approaches. Again, our four-year agreement began in March of 2009, and is set to expire March 2nd of 2013. Again, Redspeed Illinois has approached us to renew our contract. The board has asked to consider renewing our agreement with Redspeed Illinois. The renewal period would be for a period of two consecutive years, and three automatic year terms. So basically, if you renew the agreement, it will renew from March 2nd, 2013, through March 20, March 2nd, 2019. One note of importance is that either party shall have the right to terminate this agreement without cause within 60 days written notice to either party. And I will draw your attention to two facts. We confirm that with Redspeed Illinois, that the board at any time, the village at any time, has the option of canceling this agreement with 60 days written notice. And speaking with our village attorney, John Zemanek, we also put an addendum onto Redspeed, which pretty much emphasized, basically said the same thing, but emphasized this fact as well. And Redspeed has agreed to enter into that addendum as well. One other thing which we are adding on to this agreement is also, should the board renew the agreement with Redspeed, there's a side agreement, which is done annually, that allows Redspeed to access the Secretary of State's data to get information as to the violators. And that's another agreement we'd ask to be added for the board to consider, if should they decide to renew this agreement. And any questions anyone may have?
Chief, we did this before we started the TIF district down here. Or even the comprehensive plan. Now, we're trying to make the downtown and the whole community a little bit more friendly, especially the downtown and enticing. My opinion is, if we can't put it to 60th and Cass, which is probably the worst intersection in the community, I think it's time for it to go. Because how are we gonna sell our downtown, if that's the first thing they see coming south on Cass?
The problem with 60th and Cass, is it's a county-controlled intersection?
I understand that, and I understand why they said no. But that's the issue, that's the real problem when we have. And we can't do it where the problem is. And I think at this point in time, we want to take our downtown to that next level. That's why Khan was here earlier, talking about the TIF and everything else. I think we shoot ourselves in the foot, no pun intended.
No.
By putting a negative, right as soon as you get to the downtown. Before, when we weren't, this wasn't in the plans, it worked. My opinion is, I think it's time for it to go.
I kind of agree with you, but my biggest problem is, in the four years, we're still rejecting somewhere around 75 percent. Now, Redspeed is getting their payout on that 75 percent, the first shipment they send us of videos, they're making money on that. They don't care that we're rejecting them. And you'd think by now, they would have been a little bit pickier, knowing how picky we are on what we're gonna issue tickets for. So we're making, they're making money. We're, you know, we're making a drop in the hat compared, I'm sure, to what they're making. They haven't improved, they haven't shown they can bring it down to more reasonable, you know, amount, we're still rejecting the majority of them that they're sending in.
But you're looking at two different kinds of businesses, they're a for-profit business, and we're not.
Right, right. So they're there to make the money, and they're gonna keep sending us stuff even though we're rejecting it. So I don't intend on keeping them into business for this. I'd rather actually see maybe some no turn on reds. You know, no right turns put up there, because almost everything, except for a few, I mean, there were some very dangerous ones. So I understand, and I really appreciated them getting caught on camera and ticketed. But most of the stuff they're sending us are the right turns on red, and how long did they stop, and it's a matter of opinion. So I'd rather just see some signs go up, just tell everybody, there's just gonna be no turns on red at that intersection, period. You're gonna sit and wait till you get the light. And maybe, you know, we won't have as much trouble. The other thing is, we haven't had more accidents, but it really hasn't prevented that many.
There was, as you saw, a slight reduction, but now there was an increase, right?
So, to me, that wasn't worth it. I was looking for even, you know, maybe better odds, 50 percent off, but, but, you know, we're, we're still not showing that it's, you know, stopping that much more in accidents. So I would prefer to nix the program and have the board actually consider at least, and talk about maybe no turns on reds for either all four directions, or for a few of them.
Yeah, I would have to concur with my fellow trustees, I think it's time for it to go. I mean, the whole purpose when we did this was to hopefully move this thing into sections where we really need it. And as a gateway to the downtown, or part of it, I think it's something that needs to go, especially with the comprehensive plan coming, and it looks like the TIF scenario's going into place. I mean, I think 60th and Cass is what, in the top 10 or top 5, in the County of DuPage, and our people out there won't get off the, off the snide to do something about it, so. And money-wise and resources, I think whoever's reviewing these or whatever within the police department could probably be better put to use either out on the street or some other fashion within the police department, instead of taking up that time. Adjudication hearings, you've got $16,000 that's still sitting out there. And how much, you know, then it's a question of collections, collection agencies get a portion of that.
But that's 16,000 for this year.
16,000 for 2012.
That's 16,000, it's what's due us now, but that, there could be fines in there from 2008, 2009, people that haven't paid.
But, all's I'm saying is, once it goes to a collection scenario, who knows what's gonna happen with it. I think it served the purpose for what it is, we wanted it, we originally, when we talked about this, was, yeah, put it there first because we knew we could, but then we wanted to move it out of there eventually, and either move it to Cass and Ogden, or 83 and Pasquenelli, or down to 60th and Cass. And every one of those directions we've taken, to try to make those intersections safer, either the state's told us no, or the county's told us no, so.
What about the railroad, what happened with that?
They are, would like to have a flat rate fee. Their, Redspeed is looking, there's only one other country, company, I'm sorry, village, and I believe it's Illinois and DuPage, I believe, and can't recall if that's Wooddale or Winfield, I'm not sure which, I think it's Wooddale.
I mean, if we look at probably the most dangerous intersection right there, it's the tracks and the, and Cass Avenue. We know how many people go through underneath there every day.
They're looking for a flat rate fee from there, monthly. Where, right now, we're paying for, per violation, and they're looking for a flat rate fee. As you see, violations can go up or down, and that's a gamble that we would have to take at that time. They have approached us, and they would offer, they'd offered us the opportunity to do that. However, again, if we?
There's a bigger cost involved.
Right.
Is that different technology? Because that, that's a different issue, right? There, there, that would not be the red light, that would be looking violations over the tracks.
Correct.
So is that, that's a different type of camera, different?
Yeah, it would have to be tied into the railroad, and I know they would probably be, need rail, right-of-way, and the rail approval as well, too.
I, I know recently I had further conversations with the Burlington Northern Santa Fe about it. Something that they were strongly encouraging a few years ago. I, I didn't get a clear answer, but it seems like the interest level has dropped off. There's a couple of cameras in the county. I think she mentioned there's one out in Naperville that's been out there. But she also made the comment to me that a lot of the companies are reluctant to install the cameras, and it wasn't quite clear why. Maybe because of?
Redspeed did approach us, and as I said, again, the, the concern would be, is the flat rate fee. And we had not asked them that they would change that, but.
I know initially, part of the problem had to do with ICC rulings, but I think that got cleared up a few years ago.
I mean, the only reason I mention this, because that one morning I sat out there and I watched 10 of them go underneath. Three at one time. So it's, it is an accident waiting to happen. I mean, there's no doubt that it will. Eventually, somebody will get it, but to see it in an hour and a half, 10 cars go underneath. Just amazing.
And, and the assumption would be as well, too, is that as the signs were there, people that travel that way every day will, you know, become more careful, as they do with the red lights, people that travel that way every way, they know that that's a red light intersection, and, you know, use more caution. Would that reduce the number of violations as well? It would, it's, it would improve safety, but, and there's also the cost analysis as well.
Good. I'd have to agree with the other trustees here, I think it's a very unfriendly welcome. Trustee Scott said, we gotta be as friendly as we can. I mean, we've all gotten the emails, there's been quite a few people that have been very upset by it. I think this is a good time, especially if it's not reducing, like Pat said, a bunch of accidents. I think it's time we move on, so, thanks.
I think originally, though, you know, I think trustee Seneca had put, you know, even if it saves one life, it would have been worth it. But, you know, there, there comes a time you just have to look at it and say, is it? And that's why I said, if it's making a right turn and you're gonna hit a pedestrian, and if that's what we're worried about, put those no turns on, you know, no turn, no right turns, and just leave it like that. And then, any accident, whether it's at one or any other intersection, it could happen at any one, and we only have two cameras out of the four directions, so. I don't regret doing it, I think it was a good eye-opener. I think it, I mean, it even made me look more and think more when I'm driving, so I'll never regret doing it. I feel sorry for the ones who got ticketed, but I saw them. We saw them go through, we saw them not stop. And it wasn't up to me to sit there and say, it was okay for them to break the law. So, you know, I, I, I think it was a really good four years with it, but I think there's a, a time, and since we can't move it to other intersections, because our thought was, they won't know if we moved it, we could move it here, we could move it there, nobody would know whether it's there or not, so they would continue being a careful driver, since we're stuck with just those, that intersection.
Alright, we're stuck, just so the public's information, for those watching and not recall. With the county, it, in order for us to install the red light cameras on a county intersection, or a state intersection, needs the county's approval, and also needs the state's approval. The reason Naperville and Cass was because it's a village-owned intersection and property, and we were able to do so. The only other ones that we'd be able, and Director May would have to correct me, but I believe would just be in our downtown area. Those are the only other lights that we own, so if we wanted to install more lights, would have to be in our downtown area.
You'd probably have to, I don't know, about 59th and Cass, if that's our street?
That's a county intersection.
That's right, that's a county down there.
How did they do it on 83 and 60th Street? How did they do it on Ogden and Wolf Road? Different companies?
Maybe different companies, but I know, Willowbrook is definitely, the one on 83 is a different company. I don't know who they're using. But that's a state-controlled highway, as was ours, if we had met, you know, for Cass and Ogden, we had problems with the, putting the equipment on the right-of-ways, the parkways or whatever, are not, you know, suitable for it. One would have to be, would have to get Jewel, and I believe Jewel was not willing to allow us access. The problem with the, with Route 83 is it's a state highway. They petition the state and get permission.
Right now, we have to try to do, start doing it better than everybody else, and different, and maybe we can start marketing ourselves as not a red light camera community instead.
I just wanted to add the, kind of the differences between roads that are county jurisdiction and state, and I don't really have good detail on it, but the county, the obstacle there was they don't have a policy yet on how to, you know, permit communities to do that, and that was something they were working on back when we first started. So I don't really have any idea what the status is, but the state, everything under IDOT jurisdiction, like, like any subject, you know, regarding that, is, they'll issue you a permit to do it, but they want you to remodel the entire intersection and change all the equipment out and go to LED, and essentially do all of their intersection retrofit for them. And, you know, that's why we didn't do it, because now there's, you know, a hundred thousand dollar investment, and that has nothing to do with red light, you know, it was just changing in the equipment. So the, the restrictions on the permit were high. Now, just as another example, we're, in the spring, we'll start remodeling, you know, Pasquenelli and Ogden, and that will all be new equipment anyway, so. Just for reference, that would be another opportunity where we could, you know, apply for a permit probably successfully, if we needed to. But after the remodeling, it hopefully won't be an issue either, so, I don't even know if it'd be wanted.
Shows the state can do something to save the people, so Lenny?
One issue which I will have to bring, or look into, is if the board chooses not to renew this, and I have to renew the agreement, exactly what the timeframe is, as again, I know we can cancel, this is coming up for renewal, I don't know if there's a time period with that, and we'll look on that, and I can update you by, over the weekend on that.
Is there an interest then, or is this a separate discussion for trustee Clubinow's idea of no right turn on red? Or was that?
It could go for a second, at another time.
That means that's something the board's interested in having on an agenda for discussion?
Sure.
I don't know if I would do all four inters, I don't know if we could do all four like that, you'd have everything standstill at 5 o'clock. Nothing would move. It'd be backed up to?
It's bad enough.
I will also, that's why Attorney Director May, are there warrants, by warrants, a threshold or a requirement has to be met by the state to install those, that type of traffic control? I'm not, we're not sure.
Shall we research that, and then? Shall we research that, and then if it's appropriate, put it on the agenda?
Can we hold off for a while on that one? I think we got enough on our plate right now.
I would hate to have the no right turn.
It couldn't be done anytime in the future with the future board.
We can always keep an eye on it.
Pollock Works Director May suggested that the Pollock Works Committee meeting, probably bring it there.
Sure.
And decide where we'll go from there.
I just want to make sure, because I think, once the people get the feeling that it's gone, the camera's gone, they're going to start going back to their old habits of sliding through. And we've seen a couple of times when a pedestrian, a bicycle was trying to cross, and they didn't seem to care. So I was just thinking that that might stop some of the possible accident on a right turn, where they're not watching.
Yeah, as we saw from the videos, some of those people continue to do that, so it's, it's not going to affect their
Yeah, but it's not always the same one, unless they're not
No, well, that's the viola, again, go back with the justification of that violation.
It happens everywhere, those intersections.
Once they're zinged, they remember that intersection for a while.
I turn right on that corner every day of my life, probably 10 times. I would hate not to be able to turn right.
Well, I'll tell you, I have not been turning right.
Of course I stop.
I literally stop and wait for the light to change. I don't give a darn. The law doesn't say I have to turn.
And again, I will, I'll stand by our positions all along for the last four years. It is a good enforcement tool, and it is a good learning tool as well, too. And the fact that when I come across intersections like that, I, whether it's a red light camera or not, it, you know, I take my time, I stop, I look, I check.
I don't even go unless it's Westmont, because I know at least you guys are reviewing it. And if you see it's a total stop, you will, you know, you're fine. I don't trust these other towns, that they're actually sitting there reviewing it, because a lot of times, it's easier for them to issue the ticket and let you come in and try to prove it. And that, and they do that all the time with that, many things. And, I mean, even in Long Island, there was these intersections that were constantly flashing. I thought it was lightning for a while at night, until I finally figured out there was a camera there.
How many tickets did you get?
I didn't get any. I was, I didn't get any, so, but I did not make right turns either. When I saw that sign there, I don't trust them on whether they're reviewing them, so I stayed there. I didn't care. The guy behind me honked. I waited for my light before I turned.
So you have the option of pulling this from the agenda, or leaving it on for a vote, assuming it would be voted down? So the other two trustees who aren't present, I know at least one of them will be back, can make some comments?
I would like to leave it on.
Okay.
Sure.
Especially if there's a time span if we have to worry about the notice?
I guess my question there would be, if we're not renewing it, we're not renewing it. Why would it be a cancellation clause?
Yeah, we just go right
I'm sure there isn't. I'll double-check. If the term expires, the term expires.
There's a 60-day
60-day notice.
For to renew it. I don't know
For cancellation, but I don't know what you mean.
We're not canceling, we're just not renewing it.
Correct.
I think it's just going to expire then.
Right.
You can advise them that we're not renewing it. There was a provision, if we terminated early in the original term, where there were some costs to have
Correct.
to pay back, but that's over and done with.
That was during the first six months.
I mean, it didn't automatically renewal by, renew by us not giving them notice.
I don't believe so, because they approached us with interest. Are we interested in renewing? And the other option is, I know there's one clause, and I have, again, I have to go back and reread it, but we have to cease using their equipment immediately. So in other words, we would not be pending other violations. We would have to keep our adjudicator on probably until all the, at least 30 days passed. The last date that the issues, citations were issued, because someone does have the ability to contest it. And so we still want that in place, so
How many, not too many are being contested, are they?
I don't have that in front of me. We didn't, we didn't want to give you the full review, just wanted to give you the annual review. I can have that for you over the weekend.
I was just curious. It didn't seem like there was a lot. I mean, they get the picture, they get the video, they can see what
I know that the hearings generally go fairly quick. It's less than an hour, half an hour.
We would still need to have our adjudicator in place anyway for administrative toes, because we do have administrative toe hearings. As well. But we'll have to rework that program a little bit, too.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Unless there's something else to come before the board? We got one other thing.
Just to clarify, on the 104 South Cass watch repair, there's two requests, a development permit and a waiver of the parking fee. I didn't hear any, and those are in a single ordinance right now. I didn't hear any comments, one way or the other, about the parking fee waiver. Unless I hear otherwise, I'll keep that as one ordinance for one vote. If you want to separate it, please let me know.
Keep it the same.
Keep it.
Thank you.
All right. Unless there's anything else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session for three items. Personnel, pending litigation, and to fill up appointment to fill a vacancy in public office.
All right, those three things.
So, second, Scott.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Klebina?
Yes.
Mayor Protim?
Yes.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.